Hello, everyone. Thank you for taking the time to join us today. We are here with candidates from District Five, which incorporates the central downtown area of Colorado Springs. The Independent Center is passionate about civic engagement, and we recognize that City Council directly impacts the daily lives of our community members in many ways, including transportation, housing, and infrastructure. These issues are important, not only to the disability community, which makes up nearly 20% of the population, but also to those community members you work with, live with, care for, and know individuals within the disability community. The disability community is the largest minority community that anyone at any time can join. For this reason, we are committed to engaging our City Council candidates in active discussions around topics that impact the disability community now and in the years to come. We will begin by allowing each of the candidates to briefly introduce themselves, and then we will move into the question and answer segment and close with any final comments from the candidates. We ask, in the interest of time, that the introductions be limited to around 90 seconds and that the responses to the questions be limited to around 90 seconds. We will have an alert of 30 seconds, 10 seconds, and then when time has ended. All right, so the order of the candidates speaking will be completely random. I have just kind of put everybody's name into a hat, so to speak. So with that, we will start with brief introductions, and we'll start with you, Mrs. Fabian.
Good morning, and thank you so much for doing this. I'm Mary Elizabeth Fabian, and I'm a small business owner, a wife, a mother, a founder of nonprofits and schools. I'm in this race because I love our community, and I want it to be better represented. I believe that every person in our district deserves a representative who will communicate with them and advocate for them. As a member of our community, my record shows that I can do just that. Additionally, my background in business, finance, community outreach, and more will help me serve my neighbors in District Five. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Zelnick.
Good morning. Can you hear me, I hope? Good. Matt Zelenok here. I grew up in Colorado Springs, and Colorado Springs has been my home for over 30 years. And although I've left a few times to attend college or other jobs or employment opportunities, I've always come home to Colorado Springs, and I really don't anticipate ever leaving again. And as I look towards the future, I think about having a family and kids, and I want to make sure that Colorado Springs is not just a great place that I had when I was growing up, but an even better place for future generations and everyone else living here. And I really hope to bring a voice of the people back to City Council, and that's really why I'm running, is to really hope to reach out to the community to bring their issues and concerns back to City Council so that we can address them once and for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Van Arna.
Good morning. My name is Carly Van Arna. Thank you for having us and hosting this. I too am a Colorado native. I grew up in Woodland Park. I moved down here when I was 18 years old. For the last 12 years, my husband and I have been raising our son. We have built small, successful businesses. We own a couple of businesses here in town. I also manage other small businesses. And the reason I am running, not to echo everything that everybody else has said, but I too want to create a wonderful community for generations to come. I'm going to live here the rest of my life. My son is going to live here. I want to make sure that we are creating a community and a city that works for all of us, not just the select few. I am excellent at collaboration, finding common ground. I support transparency, open communication, so that everybody in our district has the opportunity to be heard, have their issues addressed, and feel like that they've got an advocate on City Council looking out for their needs. So again, thank you for having us, and I look forward to representing all of you.
Thank you. Mr. Hermes.
All right, great. Hey, thanks for putting this on. Fantastic platform. I'm glad a lot of the candidates can join. It's great seeing Matt. I know he's Cheyenne alumni as well, man. So it's fun seeing that and just all, you know, the youth being involved here. And it's a lot of time commitment, so I think it's really cool to see the candidates taking the time out of their lives to, you know, even run the campaign. It's very time consuming. So it's great to, you know, learn a lot from other people, and I think we have a great group of candidates. Also, you know, I grew up here in Colorado Springs and want to make sure our community keeps its values. That have made it so great. Growing up here, a lot of those values made me who I am today. The conservative patriot values of Colorado Springs, I absolutely love, especially being in a military town. So want to make sure that the district's properly represented, too. I think it was Mary who touched on that, but I think that there's a lot of assets east of Union that could be used, a lot of vacant commercial space when it comes to Rustic Hill Shopping Center, Citadel Mall. I'm a big believer in the city starting to use some of the vacant space, whether it be transforming it for affordable housing. But placing that is a priority over the fact of new development out east, which can be so expensive. You need both, I understand, but I think we should be building up areas in town that require that infill right now that can be utilized before focusing on expanding further out east, which can be a lot more expensive as far as infrastructure, water, sewer, everything that gets involved when you go into a new development. So anyway, thanks for having me. I'm looking forward to a great conversation and learning a ton today.
Great. Thank you all for those wonderful introductions. So we're going to start by talking about the history of Colorado Springs in disability and civil rights advocacy space. So Colorado Springs has a long history of disability civil rights advocacy, including the creation of Title II ADA rights. The Americans with Disabilities Act was signed into law by Republican George Walker Bush in 1990. After 30 years, the first question is, how would you address the barriers that exist for individuals with disabilities in Colorado Springs, given resistance to change from some community members? Mr. Zelnick, we'll start with you.
Sure, that's a great question, and I think the community regarding individuals with disability is not always heard. I think they have a hard time bringing their concerns to City Council and otherwise. And I think that's an area that I believe we can truly improve, is to really start to engage the community, you know, ask what we can do to help them and what their true issues are. You know, it's hard to solve problems or work through problems if we don't really know what the problem is. And so I think that's a first, a big step in making some headway there. And, you know, not only that, I was a little bit concerned. I've been watching almost every City Council meeting for the last few weeks and months now. And unless you make a specific prior arrangement, there is no closed captions for the City Council meetings. There's no ASL interpreter for these meetings. And I find it kind of repulsive in that regard, that individuals with disabilities are going to have an extremely hard time even attending a City Council meeting. And I find that to be extremely problematic in itself. So I think even just addressing these kind of root cause concerns of how to even start these conversations is one of the challenges ahead. And these are one of the challenges that I'd definitely like to take on and make sure that we're actually engaging the community that needs help.
Thank you so much. Mrs. Fabian.
Would you be willing to restate the last half of that second question, please?
Absolutely. So the question was, how would you address the barriers that exist for individuals with disabilities in Colorado Springs, given resistance to change from some community members?
So I am the daughter, wife, and mother of disabled individuals. My husband and, of course, my children all live in Colorado Springs. I advocate on a daily basis for my family. Specific issues that are on a steady level need to be handled by making sure that we have the budget item, line item, to address those concerns. For instance, Mr. Zelnick was right. You have to request, if you go to City Hall for a, for a City Council meeting, you have to request that interpretation. What we need to start doing is having those budgetary items just built in so that it's no longer a request, because if somebody comes in for the very first time, they won't have access to that. They won't know. And that becomes a barrier to their participation in our process. Additionally, going into communities like the deaf and hard of hearing community, like reaching out to the Independent Center and making sure that we are having town halls so that we understand where the concerns are and where those barriers are. Because I, as a fully able person, may not know that a barrier exists, but I can absolutely advocate and push for that change, and I can collaborate with my other City Council members, because it doesn't matter if I have the best idea in the world. If I'm the only vote for that idea, it's not going to pass. So I will work with every member of council to make these changes happen.
Thank you so much. Mr. Hermes.
Yeah, great question. I do think that, you know, even outdoor knocking, which is crazy, you can see that a lot of areas in town still aren't wheelchair accessible, right? And they're starting to finally pick up on that. I think that's something we really have to make sure, as far as transportation goes, as far as people, you know, taking a wheelchair, whether it be, you know, gay. You just kind of fly under the coattails on that one. And that's concerning to me. I've seen some stuff.
We seem to have lost Mr. Hermes. Hopefully, he will rejoin us. There he is. Mr. Hermes, we can see that you're on the call, but we're having a really hard time hearing you.
Hello.
Hello.
I believe Mr. Hermes' time is up. Can we please move on?
Sure. Ms. Van Arna.
Hi, thank you, and great question. So as you had stated before, the disability community makes up 20% of our city. So I believe it is very important that when we're making decisions that involve transportation, when we're making decisions involving infrastructure, improving roads, improving sidewalks, it is so important that we are addressing how this is affecting all community members of all different walks of life. As, as Mary Elizabeth had pointed out, you know, as an able-bodied individual, I might not know firsthand a lot of those struggles, but part of being a representative is making sure that you are seeking out feedback and concerns from your constituents that have all different experiences, that have all different opportunity or circumstances affecting them. And as a, as a competent representative, we need to make sure that we are making that effort to gather that feedback and to implement that into policy that works for everybody. I don't feel like we should necessarily have to go out of our way to seek that out or that the disabled community needs to go out of their way to get it to us. That is something that we should be considering, that we should be thinking about all the time. We need to be thinking about all of our community members in every decision that we make. And so that is something that I feel like my skill set is really well aligned to collaboration, thinking about unintended consequences and making sure we avoid those before they become problems for individuals. I guess that's all.
Thank you so much for that. So the next question is, what solutions do you propose to solve the needs of people who are transient dependent so that they can have access to all areas of the city? And Mrs. Van Arna, we'll start with you.
Yeah, our, our transit system is grossly inadequate. This is something that needs to be addressed, and it really needs to start taking a priority. I feel like it's kind of fallen on the, on the back burner and by the wayside a little bit. But, you know, if, if you have to get on a bus and go across town, a drive that would normally take 20 to 25 minutes can take over three hours and three transfers on a bus. When you're looking at other communities that have a similar population size as well as geographical size, we have half as many bus routes. We have fewer bus terminals. We are not utilizing multimodal transportation like rail systems and trains. This is something that has, that we're way behind on, and we need to get caught up. And again, when we're doing these things, we need to take in consideration all of our population and all of their needs. So I feel like we really need to make this a priority, start budgeting the money for it, and develop comprehensive strategy that we can implement with achievable goals that get us caught back up, that get our public transportation system working for our community again.
Thank you. Mr. Zelnick.
Of course, our city is very large. It spreads over 200 square miles, and it is incredibly difficult even for someone that can drive a vehicle to get from one corner to the other. And especially in our district, we have been misfortune of not necessarily having a comprehensive bus route that accesses the center of our actual district. And so some of the things that I would definitely like to see would be diversity in our public transit system. And it seems that we're kind of on track now to be, you know, a bus-public transit-based city, which is fine. But there's no need to have large, high-capacity buses going through every part of town when there may not be ridership everywhere. But there's still going to be individuals that obviously rely on public transport, whether they have a disability or otherwise. And we need to start really taking effect into how close our bus stops really are to everybody. Like I said, you know, the center of our district is incredibly inaccessible to a bus route, and that's problematic. You know, how can we expect people to be able to ride the bus if they're two miles away from a bus stop? And not only that, we need to make sure that our public transit system has the actual mechanical hardware, and whether that's lifts or other equipment that we can outfit our buses with so that individuals with disabilities can use them in an effective manner, a safe manner, and that we can keep our buses on schedule and that, you know, our bus drivers are accustomed and well-trained to help these individuals, you know, ride the bus. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Fabian.
I am a fan of looking at all of the solutions and then whittling it down from there. We need to be innovative, and that means we need to be looking at things that may not have been available 10 or 15 or 20 years ago. And one of those is rideshares. If we were implementing rideshares along with our busing system, that would make it more accessible to more individuals without adding the additional cost of vehicles and additional routes, because we are adding routes on a yearly basis. We are making those efforts, but our growth is going faster than our, our transportation centers' growth can, can match. So we need to be innovative. We need to look at those solutions that may be not the traditional. And rideshares would help us when people have mobility issues or are not close to a bus route, to either access a bus route or to access a space that has no bus route, which there are many within the city.
Thank you for that. Mr. Hermes.
Yeah, sorry about the technical difficulties there. Anyway, on my last comment on just restaurants, I think we need to make sure that all restaurants are brought up to ADA code. And then as far as this last question goes, I do think Mary had on a good point. You know, the large bus system, you know, if you look at how many riders there are and how efficient, the lack of efficiency, I should say, it is a concern. So I do think we need to utilize, whether it be rideshare services, smaller, smaller buses, more efficient, that can go to smaller parts of town, right? Because I, I read to about, you know, three or four people who are at Cheyenne Village, and I know the accessibility is a problem, and they have to really plan out their whole day to get to a bus stop that is pretty far away rather than having smaller buses at more convenient locations that aren't going to take as much manpower and are going to be more efficient. So I do think we have to start thinking outside of the box. Like Matt said, our city, you know, just sprawls out. It's pretty, pretty big. So we do have to look at different modes of transportation rather than the traditional bus system.
Thank you for that. Our final question is around housing. So what is the role of the city in making housing and public spaces more accessible for people with disabilities? And Mr. Hermes will likely start us off.
Yeah, I think it's critical. I think we just need housing in general right now, too. I think that's a big part of it, is, you know, we talked about affordable housing, about 1,200, 1,200 some change is the average two-bedroom rent. And that's not really affordable. We need seven, $800 doors for rent. And you look at areas like the Citadel Mall, Rustic Hill Shopping Center, they sit on, they're like ranchers, right? They sit on ground level. They're not two stories. They could be easily converted, ADA accessible. So I think there's a lot of retail centers in town that would be primed for this solution just in the fact that they already are ground-level accessible, could be easily converted. And not to mention, you could go in, make money as an investor. You do not need the city involved at all. I've done the math on this. I've looked at other projects converting office and retail space. And, I mean, you could be making 8%, 9% return on your money by just charging about 800 a door, and that includes all utilities. So I think we need to look at the vacant commercial space in this town and make sure we are converting that and making it ADA accessible to serve that population. Thanks so much.
Thank you. This is Fabian.
Obviously, with any public space, we should be making sure that everything is ADA accessible, because that is an expectation, that is a requirement, and we owe that to our citizens. Our role needs to be one of looking at zoning and looking at the requirements and making the, the right choice be the easy choice. Let's make zoning requirements and building codes easy to obtain for accessible housing. As far as affordable housing is concerned, I believe that Rustic Hills, the Citadel, all of our open, unused retail spaces should be being reused and created in a way that meets the accessibility and the needs of our community as a whole, be that apartments and also townhomes and starter homes and additional park space. We should be looking at this holistically, not as a one-off.
Thank you for that. Mr. Zelnick.
Yeah, so unfortunately, affordable housing is a tough subject, I think, to tackle in general. And then when we add, you know, making it more accessible for individuals with disabilities, it's kind of a double whammy of a sort. But that's not to say that the city can't be very proactive in these measures, even down to the planning phase. I think it's going to be crucial to start requiring more ADA-accessible units in housing developments, especially where we're starting to see infill and high-density units in the downtown area. I don't know offhand what the requirements are for the developers to set aside a certain number of ADA units. I'm almost positive that it's probably insufficient. And again, I think this is a great way to really bring the, the community in and to really decide what the numbers are. You know, if, if there's individuals with disabilities that feel that they don't have equal access to housing because they're not equipped with the hardware that they need to get by, we need to hear from these individuals so that we can implement policies, especially just at the planning phase, to make sure that there are accommodations for these individuals and that we move forward with, with them in mind. And we make sure that the developers keep these ideas in mind as well for moving forward in the future. Thank you.
My turn? Awesome. So again, I think this is kind of a systemic problem that needs to start with policy change. Like Mr. Zelenok had said, in, in the planning phase, this is something that, that should be at the forefront of our minds when we're approving planning projects, when we're amending zoning codes, and when we're creating policy. The disabled community shouldn't have to go out of their way to make their concerns hurt. The city needs to have this in the forefront of their mind whenever we're taking on new projects, new development, or redoing old development, retrofitting, retrofitting it into a new purpose. Absolutely, it should, it should be in the policy. It should start at the planning phase that ADA compliance needs to be met, that we need to make a better effort to make sure our public spaces and our new development and our redevelopment is being constructed in a manner that is friendly to, to everybody, to our entire population, including the disabled. This isn't new. This shouldn't come as a surprise. This is something that we should have been planning for and working towards the whole time. So I just, I really think it's very important when policymakers and our city leaders are making decisions that they are keeping everybody that these decisions impact in the forefront of their mind. So I agree with what's been said about infill, about repurposing some of these underutilized spaces, using that for affordable housing, because, yeah, we, we, we don't have affordable housing in this community right now. We really need stuff that, that targets people earning 30% to 40% of the area meeting income, which means they need places to rent for three or for $600 to $700 a month. The average rent is $1100 to $1300. So yes, these are, these are all things that need to start at the policy level.
Thank you for that. Thank you for all of those thoughtful responses. We'll now give each of you some time to share any closing remarks or any final thoughts, and we'll start with you, Mrs. Fabian.
Thank you again for having this forum. I'm in this race because I love Colorado Springs, and I have watched for the past several years as our tax dollars are spent on pet projects while rates and fees are increased. This has not served our whole community. This has affected me personally in my work with charities and my businesses, and I know it's affecting my neighbors. It is time for District Five to have a councilwoman who will represent the full district, not just her neighborhood. This will better support our families and our businesses, and ultimately, our city as a whole. As a proud wife of a disabled veteran, a mother, a business owner, and an active member of our community, I ask for your vote so that I can continue my efforts in community advocacy at City Hall.
Thank you. Mr. Hermes.
Sir, last opportunity to chime in, correct? Okay, fantastic platform today. Thanks for putting it on. Appreciate it. Obviously, growing up here in Colorado Springs, love it. Remember, my grandfather worked down at that Air Force Base, and a lot of military in our family. Absolutely love the military. That's what made this platform possible today. It's the freedom that those people provide us. Also, big shout out to the law enforcement out there, Fire Department. It's organizations like that that keep us safe, enable us to live in this great city. So very grateful. I think Colorado Springs has done a great job in the last, I'd say, eight to nine years. We've had unbelievable leadership at the city level. We got a great blueprint for Colorado Springs. Look at the cranes downtown. Look at the massive success we have had. So that's one thing I want to say, is I think the leadership we have right now is doing a fantastic job. Can they do better? Yeah, of course, always. But... Yeah, of course, always. But I think we gotta, we gotta be positive on this. There's a lot that can be still built upon, but the success has been great. And I think the city is champions, and we finally have an identity. And you got big things like Southwest Airlines coming in and another massive apartment, $91 million apartment project going in on East Pike Peak that just got announced the other day. So we're making great progress. People are investing in Colorado Springs. Let's just make it that much better. Thanks for the collaboration today. It's fantastic. Y'all have a great one.
Thank you. Mr. Zelnoff?
Thank you again for hosting this meeting, and it's great to see everyone here, whether you think that or not. At any rate, you know, again, I grew up in Colorado Springs and I too love this city. This has been my home for so long. And I want to make sure that our city is continuing down the right path. And not only that, I want to make sure that we're proactive about a certain amount of measures. You know, back in 2017, we got faced with some lawsuits regarding ADA access. And I find that to be absurd. Why do we need to wait until we have a lawsuit to take action? You know, we really need to start focusing to incorporate everyone in our community, to make sure everyone has a voice, and to make sure that everyone has an equal place at the table when we're making policy. And that's something that I really am going to encourage once I'm elected, is to really bring the community together in that regard and to make sure everyone feels that they have an equal place at the table and an equal voice and that they're represented. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Van Arna?
Yes, thank you again for having us today and hosting this. It's wonderful to be able to reach out to all the members of our community. Like I had said before, I've lived here my whole life. I'm going to continue to live here, raise my family here. And yeah, I think our leadership needs to continue. We need to be proactive. We need to be forward-thinking, looking towards the future and understanding that the decisions we're making today are going to impact the city for generations to come. And so we need to be thoughtful. We need to be respectful, and we need to be inclusive. We need to include our entire community in the decisions that we make. Being a city council member is a huge responsibility. It's a responsibility that I wouldn't take lightly. I finally had an opportunity where I can give back to this wonderful community that has helped to make my family a success in a place where we can build small business and build up our neighbors. And so now that I'm at this point, I, I just really look forward to being able to give back to my community and keep it a great place for everybody and make sure we're addressing the concerns of all of our neighbors. So yeah, thank you for having us.
Thank you. Thank you so much for joining us today. I truly appreciate all of your time and thoughtful responses around areas in the disability community. We will be posting these conversations to our various web platforms and wish you all of the very best in the days coming up. Thank you so much. Have a great day.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bye.